I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is April 22nd, 2025. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knudsen, Vogel Zhang.
Here.
Huen.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Goodrich.
All council members except Knudsen and Goodrich are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Huen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay. Next item, I have a couple of proclamations that I am going to read this evening. And the first one is for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Coralville. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I would urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote a well-being of this and future generations. Signed on this 22nd day of April 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and we have our Parks and Rec Director Sherry Proud here to receive this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's one of my favorite days when we do the Arbor Day proclamation. And I'm here to report that since our last Arbor Day celebration, the City of Coralville has planted on public land 1,548 trees. In my tenure as director, that's our highest number of plantings in one year. Those are spread across projects, the grant money that we've got through the Iowa DNR, through Mid-American Trees Please, and other small grants. So we're really excited about that number. And it's also just a good time to encourage residents to look out their front door. And if they don't have a tree in their front yard, please plant one. If you can look out your back deck or your back door and you don't have a tree in your backyard, please plant one. We are very short trees in the state of Iowa. In 2020, the Iowa DNR conducted an analysis of where we were with tree canopy. And we are 3 million trees short in the state of Iowa. And then they went back in after the Durate Show and added in both Durate Show and Emerald Ash Bor and determined that by 2030, in order for the state to keep up with carbon pollution, and shade, and habitat, and all of those things you talked about in the proclamation, we need to plant 10 million trees in the state of Iowa. So we were trying to do our part here in the City of Coralville and encourage all of our residents to do the same. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Do you want a photo?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. And my next proclamation is for Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness. And whereas the face of mental illness isn't some stranger, it's our coworkers, our neighbors, our friends, our families, and sometimes ourselves. And whereas mental illness does not discriminate, it affects adults, children, and people of every ethnic, socioeconomic, religious, or political backgrounds. And whereas 1 in 5 adults in the United States experiences a diagnosable mental disorder, and 1 in 5 youth aged 13 to 18 experiences a severe mental disorder in a given year. And whereas suicide is the second-leading cause of death for American youth ages 15 to 24. And the vast majority of those who die by suicide have a mental illness that is often undiagnosed or untreated. And whereas half of all chronic mental illnesses begin by age 14, and 3/4 begin by age 24. Therefore, treating cases early could address and reduce disability before mental illnesses become more severe. And whereas NAMI Johnson County will hold its annual walk at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 10th, 2025, at the Terry True Blood Recreation Area in Iowa City. The walk aims to inspire and initiate a community conversation about the impact that mental illness has on every part of our collective lives, from family systems to primary healthcare, to the education system, to the business community, and beyond. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as NAMI Mental Health Awareness Month in Coralville, and encourage all residents to increase the awareness and understanding of mental health, and be informed of the treatment options available in our country for individuals with mental illness. Signed on this 22nd day of April 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and do we have someone here to receive this proclamation tonight? We do not? Okay. Excellent. We will move on then to the next item on our agenda. Community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to address us this evening? Okay. We will move on then to our next agenda items. So we have a presentation this evening from the folks at the Johnson County Livable Community for Successful Aging Policy Board. Okay. So take it away.
Good evening. Thank you. Rachel Carr with Johnson County Livable Communities. I really appreciate the time on the agenda today. I know your time is very valuable, so try and get through this as quickly as I can. The Johnson County Livable Community is a policy board appointed by the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, and we're currently going through a process of surveying Johnson County residents aged 45 and up. And this is focused on how to make Johnson County a livable community, and various factors that impact folks' ability to age successfully. We know that the aging population is growing in our community, and we want to make sure that as a community, we're able to support folks as they age. A livable community is one that provides safe, walkable streets, age-friendly housing, transportation options, access to needed services, and opportunities for residents of all ages to participate in community life. We know that that social isolation piece is very important, particularly for seniors. So the questions are designed around the AARP eight domains of livability, so outdoor spaces, buildings, transportation, housing, social participation, respect and social inclusion, work and civic engagement, communication and information, community and health services. And then we added an additional one, including disaster planning. Since the Durate Show happened, we recognized that our community really needs to focus on being prepared for another one, unfortunately. Responses to the survey will provide really valuable information about those livability domains by exploring the experiences and perceptions of Johnson County residents. We started this process back in December and have been doing sort of a slow rollout in more of the rural areas, and now we're moving into the Iowa City Coralville area. So a sample of residents should receive this neat postcard, and I have several which I'd love to leave with you, for the opportunity to complete the survey. Anyone can complete it, though, so if you don't get a postcard in the mail, we'd still invite you to participate. Folks can go onto the livablecommunity.org website to access the survey. We do have the survey translated in multiple languages, so English, Spanish, Arabic, and French. And if you're a person who does not like to do anything online, there is a phone number you can call on the card, and we can mail you a printed survey. You could also pick up a copy of the printed survey. We want to make sure we're reaching people in the way that they're able to access technology. So the Livable Community Policy Board will use the survey results to assist in strategic planning efforts in making recommendations for an action plan on how Johnson County can improve the livability for all ages. Survey results will also be made available to all cities within Johnson County, so we'll ensure that this council has access to that information. The survey only takes about 15 minutes to complete, and then there's actually an opt-in for a $20 gift card incentive, so folks can opt in for that if they are interested. Johnson County was recognized by AARP as an age-friendly community in August of 2021. Completing this survey process and then moving into the action planning will also allow Johnson County to be a designated livable community within the AARP network. So that will be an interesting experience, I think, for Johnson County to go through, and may open us up to other resources in the future. That's all I wanted to share with you all. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So much. Thank you very much for that overview. Really enjoyed hearing about your work, and I know that it's very, very important, so appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
I'd be very interested in the disaster planning part of it, so might reach out later and see what you guys have.
Yeah, excellent. Us too. We're glad to add that. It isn't an AARP domain, but we knew that it was important for our community.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Is this serving?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very, very much. All right. Onto our next agenda item, which is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget. So we will have our Finance Director, Anne Hester, present the budget to us this evening. And before she starts her presentation, I do just want to note that the budget can be viewed in several places. It can be viewed on the city's website at www.coralville.org. There was a lot of information in the latest connection that went out in the mail. You can also watch this presentation or re-watch it on Coral Vision. And then there are also copies of the budget available at the Coralville Public Library and here at City Hall. So I know our city staff has been very hard at work on the budget for the last few months, and I really appreciate your work and look forward to hearing your presentation this evening.
Thank you. Budget goals. The chief goals in budgeting include a balanced budget and maintain sufficient fund balances, maintain the property tax levy rate when possible, fund necessary infrastructure, and provide high-quality city services, and enhance the quality of life in Coralville. Highlights for fiscal year 26 budget. Coralville's overall taxable property value increased by 3.67%. Under new state legislature system, a 1% limitation factor was applied, resulting in adjusted revenue growth of 2.65%. It should be noted that in a state, there were 620 cities, or 66%, that experienced decreased general fund levy due to limitation factor. Property tax levy rate for fiscal year 26 will be $14.53 rounded per $1,000 of taxable valuation. This is a decrease of 2 cents compared to prior fiscal year, where we had the rate of $14.55 rounded. The state residential property rollback, the taxable percent of assessed value, increased a little over than 1% from 46.3 rounded to 47.4%. The property tax amount reflected in this budget reflects both the low city tax rate and the higher state residential property rollback percentage. Challenges for fiscal year 26 budget. Generally rising costs, planning for future needs, replacement tax backfill payments will be phased out for fiscal year 29, and every year we'll be getting smaller amounts in replacement tax, and also uncertainty surrounding a proposed new legislature. Property in Iowa is grouped into different classes, each with varying taxing procedures: residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural utilities. Assessment limitation called rollback imposed on each class to help cushion the impact of high inflation and significant shifts between classes. As noted, for fiscal year 26, both residential and agricultural rollback increased, residential increased to 47.4 from prior fiscal year. Commercial and industrial stayed the same as prior fiscal year at 90% for the first $150,000, subject to residential rollback. Looking at state rollback history, we can see that residential and, as well as other rollback, has been up and down throughout the years. Property tax collected by Coralville, 47% of it comes from residential properties, and 50% comes from commercial, with 2% coming from industrial. Looking at the impact on residential property, even though the city tax rate decreased, property owners will see an increase in their taxes due to the higher state rollback. For 100,000 residential property valued at $100,000, that increase will be $14.76. A similar situation will be for commercial property. Looking at commercial property valued at $500,000, that increase will be $14.97. We have more, this is more calculation examples, how a property tax is calculated. Coralville tax is only a portion of overall property tax obligation. Coralville accounts for 37% of overall property tax, this is estimation at this time, and with 41% going to Iowa City School District, 17% Johnson County, and we have several others as well. Looking at general fund revenues, general fund is the main city fund. Revenues are projected to be at $34.5 million. This is 2.7 increase from prior fiscal year. And proposed budget includes an increase in utility franchise fee from 1% to 2%, which is expected to generate anywhere between $325,000 to $350,000 in annual revenue. General fund revenues support all general fund functions, including public safety, culture and recreation, community and economic development, general government, and various contingencies. Looking at revenues, where they come from, 41% of revenues for general fund come from property taxes. 13% come from charges for services. Hotel motel tax account for 11%. License and permits account for 5%. And we have a few miscellaneous as well. General fund expenditures projected to be at $34.5 million, which is a 3% increase from fiscal year 25. And general fund expenditures reflect all the costs necessary to provide services in a growing community, and include things like three new police vehicles and equipment, new parking ticket software, and license plate reading system access, reserves for future fire vehicle replacement. Also includes expansion of part-time EAL position to full-time, which will be funded through a grant and library board contribution, increase in the library materials budget in response to rising prices, public laptops replacement, and increased repairs and maintenance as buildings continue to age. Also included upgrades to the building permit software system. Parks and recreations account for 30% of all the general fund expenditures. Police, fire, and animal control account for 25%. Library museum account for 12% of expenditures. Engineering, planning, and zoning, 4%. Administration, finance, legal, HR, and insurance included account for 11%. Road use tax fund, which is one of the special revenue funds, is funded primarily by fuel taxes and vehicle registration fees. It's based on the last official census, which was in 2020, and revenue from road use tax is estimated to be at $3.1 million for fiscal year 26. Distribution for the next few years, based on the most, I guess, latest estimates from IDOT, road use tax is projected to increase. Road use tax is used to fund such areas as roadway maintenance, snow removal, traffic safety, street lights, engineering, streets cleaning. Enterprise funds, supported for specific business-type activities. Each fund establishes user rates to sustain current and long-term operations. Fiscal year 26 budget, overall total budget for enterprise funds will be just over $40 million. Proposed increases in the enterprise funds, increase in water rates for both residential and commercial accounts to support water system improvements and capacity. This is the fourth of four previously approved increases back in 2022. Yard waste bag fee increase from $1 to $1.50, and annual yard waste sticker fee increase from $25 to $40. Also, increase on overnight and continuous parking fee from $8 to $10 at both the North Ramp and South Lot, as well as increase in parking ride fee from $50 to $55 per month. Once approved, the budget will need to be filed with Johnson County Auditor in the state prior to April 30th, and it will become available, in fact, July 1st, 2025, or the end of June 2026. And in conclusion, I want to share with you a video that the city put together, and it has been already posted on the city's website, as well as has been shared over here for social media. And this video is to share information about the budget for the community.
Each year, Coralville prepares a budget for the city's anticipated expenses and revenues for the upcoming fiscal year. City budget planning involves department heads, city administration, the city council, and input from the community. The process spans about six months, starting in the fall, and goes into April each year. The city budget is a plan that looks at needs like maintaining streets, treating drinking water and collecting trash recycling, public safety services, recreation, library programs, and general government services. The budget weighs the city's needs against the revenue the city expects to receive. The city creates a balanced budget, so it doesn't spend more than it takes in. The city budget is made up of different funds. Each fund tracks and balances certain types of revenues and expenses. The chief operating fund is the general fund. Other funds are restricted in use and must be spent on specific services. When the city takes money in from things like property taxes, hotel and motel taxes, charges for services and licenses, that money goes to the general fund. The general fund supports many functions of the city, from police and fire to the library, parks and recreation, and community and economic development. This allows Coralville to provide services to our residents and businesses, keep our city running, enhance the quality of life in Coralville, and maintain adequate city staffing. Another fund type in the annual budget is enterprise funds. Enterprise funds rely on rates and fees to cover the cost of providing these services. The people who pay for these services are the people who use them. These include utility bill fees for water, wastewater, trash, recycling, and stormwater. Funds for transit and parking are also enterprise funds. The money the city takes in from enterprise funds is not used to pay for other programs and services. The city budget also plans for special revenue funds. This money comes from specific sources and is used for specific purposes. This includes road use tax revenue. Did you know that the money the city uses to pay for snow removal, road maintenance, street lighting, traffic control, and street cleaning comes from the state? In Iowa, how much money each city receives for road-related expenses is based on each city's population. For the 2026 fiscal year, the general fund budget is almost $34.5 million. Property taxes make up about 40% of the city's general fund revenue. Did you know that Coralville only receives about 37 cents of each dollar you pay in property taxes? The rest of your property tax bill goes to other units of government, like the school district and the county. Property taxes are based on the city's tax rate and the rollback set by the state each year. Rollback is how much of a property's assessed value can be taxed. Coralville's property tax levy rate will decrease from last year. The city sets Coralville's property tax levy rate with limits by the state. Even though the city's property tax levy rate will decrease, residential property owners will see an increase in the property taxes due to an increase in the state property tax rollback rate. For the 2026 fiscal year, there are no changes to the fees for stormwater, sewer, solid waste, or recycling. On July 1st, 2025, planned increases will begin for yard waste bag and annual yard waste sticker fees, water rates, which help finance future water system and capacity improvements, the franchise fee collected on electric and gas bills from Mid-American Energy and Lynn County Rec, the park and ride program at the Coralville Transit Intermodal Facility, and overnight and continuous parking in the North Ramp and South Lot in the Iowa River Landing. City council discusses the budget at public work sessions at the beginning of each calendar year, and budget information is mailed to Coralville addresses each spring. The city council holds two separate public hearings in the spring, one for the property tax levy rate, and another for the proposed budget. Once the city council votes on the budget, it must be filed with the state by April 30th. Then, the budget goes into effect on July 1st of each year. For more information about the city budget, visit www.coralville.org/budget.
Thank you. That's a great video. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. So now I'm going to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 budget. This is the time for the public to speak to us about the budget. And we have someone at the mic. Please sign in and share your name with us, and tell us what you're thinking.
You don't want to know that. I'll limit from that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rex Branstadter. I live at 2159 Lindcrest Drive here in Coralville, the area that lost cable TV for 24 hours due to the new sewer line injection system last weekend. So we didn't call, we didn't call you guys, but boy, it was pretty rough without them, just a few ballgames. What can you do? It's a pleasure for me, actually, to be here to talk about this. It's certainly not my first time to do it. I just happen to be somebody who pays attention to, tried to pay attention to the budget, and where the money comes from, and where the money goes. And where the money goes is never the mystery to me. The money goes right here in the City of Coralville for the benefit of us residents and the properties and the maintenance and care thereof. So as you know, your job is to oversee the operation of the City of Coralville, including the buildings and the services, police and fire, recreation, parks and streets, water, refuge, and buses, and transit. and refuge, and buses, and transit, and the staff, and so much more. And it's pretty demanding, and it's an ongoing assignment that you desired to achieve, obviously, when you ran for office. That must have been what you had up your sleeve. So paying full attention to the budget is your job. This actually is the first year in a long time that I have not personally had a phone call that dealt, wanted to talk to me. I could have called you, they called me half the time. I have not had a reasonably long conversation with anybody. And I think that's fair. I think that's a good reflection of what's happening here at City Hall on the operation of the city overall. I think that speaks well to the optimistic and the view and the honor and the prestige of living in Corville, if you will. I think it's, speaks well for the staff and the, the general formation of our city and where it has been and where it's, where it is now and where it's going, for sure. So my thoughts are very parallel with that. I'm not as close to the operations day-to-day, obviously, as you or the staff, but I do pay a lot of attention to everything, and rightfully so, as a matter of fact. Your attention to detail in this proposed budget is evident in the Corville tax levy. Now, the, that's a small, small decrease, but the key word there is decrease. And not, not many cities in the state of Iowa will be able to send in their budget with a decrease in, in their tax levy, not, not many at all. So congratulations to you folks and your staff for doing that. Property taxes on the houses will go up, as we noted, they're about fifteen thousand, fifteen dollars per thousand dollars assessed. It doesn't take much to have your house assessed to two, three, four hundred thousand dollars these days, so it's not like it's going to go up fifteen dollars. It's going to go up more than that. And in exchange for that, now that's, in exchange for that are the services that we're, we're going to receive. So there is, there is a payback on that, for sure. The rollback, this, this, this could be the last year of the rollback. We shall see about that. It's Iowa's archaic and funky and un, unfigureoutable way of taxing us on only a certain amount of the value of your house. And it, you saw the graph up there, it's, it's been all over the place. It's actually, one of the factors is the price of a bushel of corn, believe it or not. But I do want to comment that there are storm, storm clouds brewing in Des Moines about all this, that will directly affect each and every municipality and other taxing entities throughout the state. And of course, we know Corville will be in the mix with all the rest. I mean, I'm in great hopes that as a taxpayer of the city of Corville, that our staff and the council stay as close as you can to these in-the-wind changes. And it's going to create some, some havoc, I think, with budgets and lots of different things. This is, I think, the probably the last normal year, if you will, for a reasonable budget and a budget process on the, on the table. Next time, could be a huge adjustments, could be possible adjustments to staff, services, taxes, incomes, and the ability to provide all those services that we Corville residents not only want, but expect. You may have no choice other than to review staff levels, assignments thereof, services, and possibly contracting for certain services to save money. These are all my opinions, by the way. Any or all or none of the above, we don't know yet, but stay tuned to Des Moines in the next, at a minimum, the next two, three weeks. I mean, it's, it's, something's going to happen there in these, in these regards. If they kick it, kick the can down the road, I don't think that will be a good thing. So I'll say to each and every one of you on the council and the staff, good job on this proposed budget. Lots of input from lots of departments and staff, for sure. And as always, I would tell you that I appreciate your efforts, appreciate your being the council and paying attention to this as your staff does. And the budget process will go away for a while, but it'll be back with the fervor, but I know we'll be there to meet it. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for listening tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Yeah, make sure you sign in.
In honor of Arbor Day and as a proud owner of a lot of trees, I see a little problem with increasing the tree waste, the tree, the yard waste bags. If Iowa is lacking three million trees and would preferably like to have ten million trees, increasing the yard waste bag fee isn't going to encourage people to plant trees because trees dump yard waste. However, if y'all, if Iowa gets ten million trees, or even three million trees, and even a fraction of them are in Corville, you'll get your yard waste money keeping it at a dollar a bag.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak to us this evening?
My name is Bart Hildreth. I live at twenty-one, twenty-eight Abbey Court. We moved here in two thousand twenty-one. We love it, we enjoy it, and Lori is right down the street from me. I sent her a copy of my comments later this, earlier this afternoon. I have no comments about the allocation of the dollars because I don't know Corville that well. Instead, my comments focus on the budget practice. They make it very hard for the common citizen to understand and potentially question the city budget. There is a noticeable lack of budget transparency in Corville. Now, I've shared these comments over the last few years with various city administrators and finance directors, although I can't recall who I talked to here in the city. Now, after spending just a few minutes on your financial documents, I want to provide a few examples to illustrate my point. You continue to fail in using the Corville Connection Newsletter to sufficiently inform the public about the upcoming budget. I mentioned this in two thousand twenty-two to the city administrator and, or the finance director, I can't remember, and it's gotten less valuable now. Last year, you changed the budget public hearing date without giving adequate public notice. Maybe you met the legal definition, but it was not well understood. Looking at your budget documents, you had a larger end-of-year general fund balance than F Y two thousand twenty-four than your policy calls for. Maybe that's good policy, but at least discuss it upfront and defend the need for it. That's what we did when I was a finance director in a much larger city. You hide the general fund balance estimate for twenty-five and twenty-six. It's not well disclosed. The F Y twenty-six budget, as, as shown in the notice of public hearing, shows a deficit and a drawdown of the beginning fund balance. That may be good policy, but it is unclear besides what accounting funds are being used in that notice. Citizens are unable to crosswalk between the F Y twenty-four audit, the F Y twenty-six notice of public hearing, and the web-based twenty-six budget information that was available today. The online links do not provide access to the non-general fund governmental funds. That's a failure since it looks like it's the, all the governmental funds that are incorporated in the notice of public hearing, not just the general fund. While the city budget may meet legal definitions in Iowa of a public budget, it fails to inform citizens of what they need in order to judge your decision-making. Well, those are just a few items of how your budget fails the criteria for an adequate city budget. Now, my goal in speaking is to encourage you to step up your budget practice so that it will meet the criteria for a good city budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to us this evening? Okay. Do we have any written comments?
No written.
All right. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the fiscal year twenty, twenty-six budget as, this is a resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Okay. Any questions or discussion or thoughts? I'll just start out by saying I appreciate all the work of city staff. We have been working on this for several months, and city staff has been working very hard, and there have been so many changes at the state level that it has been a very challenging process. And so I just wanted to commend the work of staff and, and just say I appreciate everything that you've done. Any other comments or questions or thoughts on the budget? Okay.
I'll just chime in, I guess, you know, it's, first of all, I want to extend my gratitude to, to cities, all the city staff, Kelly and Ellen and Ann, all the department heads, the work that they put in. This was, this is the budget. There's a lot of work went into that. Lot of consideration for public safety, fire and police, quality of life, amenities, all the sports venues, but rec center, trails, the library, food, food pantry, all the community events that, that happen in our community. City services, the streets, trash, sewer, water, transit system. Can't forget the economic impact of Iowa River Landing that we have on, in our community. A lot of factors go into this budget, and so I just wanted to extend my, my gratitude and thanks to everyone that had a finger involved with this. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
And it's, you know, Rex mentioned earlier, the, we're facing a lot of unknowns coming out of Des Moines that's going to affect every municipality in the future, and that's something that we have keeping our radar. But I guess a lot of things in the future are unknown, right? So again, thanks to everybody involved. Thank you.
Great. Any other final questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but I do want to make a comment. I would like to, you know, make a, make a note that when staff present a budget and then present it to council, we do take the time asking all the question, making sure that, you know, we don't overlook anything. Obviously, like, I can only speak for myself. I am not an accountant, so a lot of these things, I have to rely on staff because they are the expert in, in that field, you know, to answer a question that I might have, just like a regular citizen. And I do the best I can, and I know that my colleague also do the best that they can in asking question and getting the answer. I would say if the general public like to know more or, you know, wants more transparency, please come to our meeting. We try to publish our meeting time, you know, a week in advance, sometimes two weeks in advance. And I know that life happens, and it's, it's hard to come to every single meeting, but those would be the time for you to ask question, you know, directly to staff who work on these things day in and day out, and they'll be able to answer you in more detail than we would be. And then if there's anything that is unclear that you wanted to know more, feel free to email all of us. Our email is public. You know, the city staff email is also public. Feel free to email all of us, but please know that we are not allowed to reply all. So you might get a couple of different email from all of us because we will be violating the law if we reply all. So there's a lot of nuance, a lot of thing that I think, you know, as a citizen, we, we don't know. You know, I, myself, before stepping on to be a city councillor, did not know all these processes and procedure that involve in running a city and having, you know, sort of like behind-the-scenes look for the past couple of year really opened my eyes and make me appreciate the work that each and every one of our staff have put in and the effort that they put in to make sure that, you know, the city of Corville not only continue to thrive, but also, you know, make sure that the quality of life that we offer to our citizen is top-notch as much as we can with the funding that we have. No one, none of us want to see things increase, you know, in tax, in, you know, fee, service fee. None of us like that. But the reality is what we are dealing right now sometime have our hands bound. There are thing that happening on the state level and also on the federal level that forbid us from doing the thing that, you know, we want to do because we have to follow certain law. And so I just wanted to let, you know, resident know that we are doing our best with what we have, and we are always available for question, for comment. Our public, our meeting is always public. There's nothing for us to hide, and so please take the time, come to, to our meeting, come ask us directly, you know, ask for a, a face-to-face meeting if that worked best for you. And just know that we are here to serve each and every one of our resident that wanted to call Corville home. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for those comments. Excellent.
Let me make one more. In my, in my mind, is always in the background is the, you mentioned, quality of life issues in, in any community. Quality of life amenities also drive economic development. You can't, you can't get businesses and industry to come to a community if they don't have a good quality workforce, you don't have the quality of life amenities that would attract a good workforce. Then there's, all those things work hand in hand, and so much of our budget in any municipality or goes to services that are unseen. I mean, there's, what is it, ninety-three miles of sanitary sewers to, to maintain. And it goes on, on all the, the different, the thirty-three thousand pounds of, or tons of trash. Those are the things that, that go on every day in our community, but they're not really visible all the time, but those are things that citizens expect in a quality community, and that's, that's what we're all striving to do. So, thank you.
Yeah, you bet, of course. Great comments. Any other thoughts or questions? I appreciate you bringing up the, the really, you know, devastating limitations, and, and we are really at the state and federal level. It's, you know, I said this earlier, it is, it is very, very difficult when you are penalized for growth. It is, it is very difficult to find that balance between making sure that we, you know, like you said, we, we never want to raise taxes. But we have a lot that goes into keeping the city running smoothly, and that's hard enough when you have good partners at the state and federal level, but when things are, are, are a bit challenging, it makes our jobs a lot, a lot harder. So I, I do appreciate the work that goes into it, the, the many meetings, the many conversations that, that have happened, all of the publications that have been shared. That video is outstanding. I, I think that's, I think that's just absolutely wonderful. What a great way to break it down in a, in a really, really effective way. So again, just appreciate all of the work and. again, just appreciate all of the work and and I, I am excited to have this put to bed for this year. Okay, anything else before we vote? All right. Could I have the roll call, please? Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. All right. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Ann. Okay, on to our next agenda item, which is the consolidated transit funding application. This is another public hearing. And this application is for state and federal funds, a variety of state and federal funds that would help with our transit system. So I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the filing of an application with Iowa Department of Transportation for fiscal year 2026. Iowa Department of Transportation, State Transit Assistance and Federal Transit Administration Funding. This resolution is introduced for adoption by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments on this agenda item?
Any significant changes from previous years? Not really.
Okay, anything else? All right, roll call, please. Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have several public hearings and several items that go along with agenda item number nine. This is an amendment to the gas and electric franchise agreements. So, we have a few public hearings that are in this one agenda item. And these hearings are required prior to amending franchise agreements and increasing franchise fees on gas and electrical facilities sold by Mid-American and electrical facilities sold by Lynn County REC. And this fee is going from 1% to 2%. So I will start with the first public hearing, which is an amendment to the Mid-American Energy Company electric franchise agreement. So I'll open that public hearing. Does anyone like to address us on this topic? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close this public hearing and we will consider our first ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1003, an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city of Corvill an electric system and communications facilities and to furnish and sell electric energy to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 20 years. This ordinance introduced for first consideration by councilmember Huen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions, comments or discussion on this ordinance?
Yeah, can you explain the 20 years period, please?
Yeah, so, so when we were doing this, these amendments, Mid-American Energy, who provides all our citizens' natural gas to all the citizens and and a partial, partially provides to the city electric facilities. They had asked that, the, the original agreements ended in three years, so they had asked that we go ahead and just, the amendment is basically restating the franchise agreement and it will last for, it ended the first one earlier and then will be 20 years from when you adopt it. Now, I mean, so that's what, that's what they're doing here. So that's why, that's why we have two longer agreements with the Mid-American Energy Company and Lynn County REC chose to just allow the franchise fee amendment. So in three years, we'll have to come back and redo their franchise agreement at that time. So, this will update the franchise agreement will be in place for both natural gas and electric facilities for the next 20 years. And Mr. Tyler Gartenberg, if you have any questions from Mid-American Energy Company, who has the city worked with and he provided us information for the budget, budget information for the franchise fees, is here if you have any questions.
Excellent.
Thank you.
For that overview. Any other questions or comments?
Just to clarify on that issue, then, we're not locked into this rate for 20 years.
No, you could, the state law allows for up to 5%, 5% for a franchise fee. We are, the first time we implemented a franchise fee was 1%. And that was after the franchise fee, the 20-year franchise fee started. So in the franchise agreement, we can, we can change it every 18 months if we want to. Now, I'm not saying we're going to do that, but the council has the right to do that, up to 5%, which is the state maximum.
Yeah, just to comment on that, you know, it is a very regressive tax and a little bit painful to have to do this. But looking down the road, as, as Rex said, I guess he's gone, you know, there could be some major challenges. So I just wanted to clarify that. And this, this may or may not be an option to fill some gaps and and avoid us from making some of the cuts that were alluded to potentially in the future.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, could I have the roll call, please? Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Okay, our next public hearing is on an amendment to the Mid-American Energy Company natural gas franchise agreement. So I'll open this public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1004, an ordinance granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right and non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain and operate in the city of Corvill a natural gas system and to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of 20 years. This ordinance introduced first consideration by councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Any questions, comments or discussion on this item?
I should have clarified earlier that this is a 20-year franchise, but after 10 years, either party could open the negotiations back up at that time. So, which is the same thing we did with the franchise agreement that was just ended, so.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or anything else to add? Okay, could I have the roll call, please? Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. And our next public hearing is on an amendment to the Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative electric franchise agreement. Okay, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? And do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1005, an ordinance amending section 111B.17 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corvill, increasing the franchise fee for the sale of electricity by Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative to 2%. This ordinance introduced first consideration by councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions, comments or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please. Knutson?
Aye.
Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Okay, our next item is a public hearing on the Corleville Youth Sports Project, Part Three. This project includes two ballfields, dugouts, sidewalk connections, a trail extension to the north and south of the existing trail, a buildout of roughed-in restrooms at the maintenance, and a buildout of roughed-in restrooms at the maintenance building. And the bids for this are due on May 15, 2025. Okay, so, we have our Parks and Rec Director. Would you like to just give a quick overview before I open the hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Just give a little overview. This is the image that we sent to the neighbors with information about the public hearing and all of the bid dates and everything. So I'll just kind of go down through this. We, at the north end, will connect this trail system. Currently, we end right here. If you can see that cursor going back and forth mid, midway down into the complex, that trail system will continue up through the park and will connect to Forever Green Road, which will be a really nice connection with the trail system. We'll have, as we move down to the south, 350-foot baseball diamonds with paths of 70, 80 and 90. A 250-foot multipurpose diamond will serve both baseball and softball. And that will have base paths of 60, 65 and 70. And this diamond is the same size as the other five diamonds, which make us now a six-diamond complex and for purposes of baseball would have that seventh diamond that could be played on as baseball. And then you're, we're showing the two future fields still here in this drawing. Lots of plaza space, roughed in, we have roughed-in restrooms that will be built out. Batting cage is on alternate right now and we will be putting out to all of our ball teams that practice there the opportunity to sponsor the batting cages. So we'll have a little bit of a fundraising there. We've got grass-paved parking with aprons that will lead to those areas. And if budget allows, after getting those batting cages in, the other thing that we'd like to do is light diamond too, if that becomes an opportunity. So, that's kind of a, a quick overview of what we're going to be doing at the youth sports park. Where bids are opened May 15. We anticipate starting construction second week of June is would be ideal, somewhere in there. And then the completion of the diamonds in September, we're trying to hit that September 1st seed date and get our first window of opportunity to grow seed this fall. And then completion of total project in November.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the plan specifications, estimate of costs in form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids and directing posts of the bid letting, all for the Corleville Youth Sports Park Phase Three. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions or comments on this item?
Say that the total, total, total of funding is 1.8 million. We're looking at a bid opportunity of under 1, 1,480,000 is what we're looking for that bid to come back in. And this will be funded through the TIF dollars, the urban renewal of of the Oakdale Research Park.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please? Vogel Zhang?
Aye.
Huen?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay, on to our next public hearing. This one is for Gregory Ridge Subdivision. And this proposal is for a four-acre, two, is for a four-acre, two-lot subdivision in a single-family residential district. And the concept plan shows a single-family detached home on each lot. So we have our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson, here to give us an overview of this project as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission Report.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. This property is designated as low-density residential on the Corleville Community Plan. This designation allows for detached, single-family homes with an average density not to exceed six dwelling units per acre. The plaits that are under consideration will create two lots and a average density of 2.01 dwelling units per acre. Also shown on the plaits and development concept is a Mid-American Energy gas pipeline easement. The preliminary plat and development concept illustrates two single-family detached homes that can be located on these lots. The applicant has worked with Mid-American Energy representatives to allow this concept with minimal driveway encroachment into the easement. Mid-American Energy will require, is, or, I'm sorry, Mid-American is a required signatory on the, on the final plat. And will require a future owner to enter into any encroachment agreements if any slight encroachments are needed for that property. Engineering design drawings will be part of that encroachment agreement and will need to be reviewed and approved by Mid-American. City staff will be violating any known restrictions as well as noticing Mid-American Energy requirements along with the, with the final plat. The property is in the immediate vicinity of low and medium-density residential consisting mostly of single-family attached and detached homes. This rezoning can be considered consistent with the residential land use, the surrounding density of residential properties as well as the surrounding zoning in the area. And the rezoning can also be considered consistent with the Corleville Community Plan low-density residential land use designation. Staff has reviewed the preliminary and final plaits and the lots meet the required lot ratios and the plaits conform with the requirements for preparation filing. And finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their April 2 meeting and by a vote of five to zero, the commission recommended to rezone Gregory Ridge Subdivision from the R4 multi-family residential district and R2 two-family residential district to the R1 single-family residential district, as well as the preliminary plat and the final plat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us on this? Step up to the microphone and.
Motivation from switching it from multifamilies to single-family units?
Well, the primary benefit for this particular property is the service lines from the street to the future developments. That was going to be a tough accommodation, not only with the size of the easement, but getting that through was going to be difficult. Locating a large multifamily apartment building on this property would also be difficult, if not prohibitive, based on the size of that Mid-American easement. So that Mid-American easement, that is property that is owned by the property owner, however, for a number of years, Mid-American reserves the right to control what happens in that particular area. And Mid-American has been clear from the start and discussions on this property that they are open to development, but no development can encroach to any significant degree into that easement because they want to protect their interests in that. So it's really a matter of scale and locating a multifamily building at this particular location would have been extremely difficult, if not impossible.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone else like to speak to us? All right, now make sure you sign in.
I'm Ron Amlon with MMS Consultants and I'm here on behalf of the applicant and just wanted to step up. Thank Dave for the good presentation that he gave and just see if he had any questions for me to answer.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm still trying to figure out where that's.
Dumb it down a little bit. This is the most you could get out of Mid-American.
We've done in communication with them and this is what they were willing to concede in the easement. So, yeah, I would say that we're not going to be able to get any more easement reduction from this.
Yeah. We got the impression when we talked about this. I think we rezoned it or something. We did something with this a while back.
The land use math amendment was approved by council approximately two years ago.
Yeah.
And there was quite a bit of discussion about that, as well as those restrictions at that time.
Yeah. You know, I think it's too bad because a larger building, it's a lot of property, but next to the interstate. You know, I think it would have been nice to get a bigger building on there, but we can't.
Awesome. Anything else? All right, thank you. Okay. Any other comments before I close the public hearing? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1006, an ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 2020-1009, is previously amended. Rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Gregory Ridge Subdivision from R4 multifamily residential district and R2 two-family residential district to R1 single-family residential district. This ordinance introduced for adoption first consideration by councilmember Huen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Seconded by Peterson. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this that we haven't covered already? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Okay. Next agenda item, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Subdivision. This proposal will divide the four point four nine acre parcel owned by Prince of Peace Lutheran Church into two lots. And we will start again with our community development and planning and zoning commission reports.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this subdivision will result in two lots. Uh, the church and all of the church's associated improvements will be on Lot One, and then they want to create a second lot, Lot Two in this case, which they would market for potential development, whether it be single family or, they're not exactly sure at this time, but it just opens up some, some options for them. Uh, city staff have reviewed the plaits, and they conform with requirements for preparation and filing. And the Planning and Zoning Commu- Commission reviewed this at their April second meeting, and by a vote of five to zero, the commission recommended to approve the preliminary and final plaits for Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Subdivision.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Could I have the first resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the preliminary plat of Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Subdivision, Corvail, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by when? Questions or comments?
Yeah. Dave, could you, um, is, is this the lot that connected to Northwest Middle School, um, football field?
Um, I don't know offhand. I could pull this up on the aerial image, but I think this is further west than that.
I, I assumed that it was that large green space that was.
Yeah, this would be south.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, this would be south of the football field.
Okay.
It'd be adjacent to what used to be their soccer field. Yeah.
So isn't it at Apple?
Yeah, it's just south of Applewood. Yeah. The church is on part of it, and then the, fills up around the corner.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a good question.
Isn't there a creek that separates that kind of right?
From the junior high and property and this property is.
Yeah, I bet there was there. Yep.
There's also a Mid-American easement on this, for the same, on this property also.
That's correct.
Oh, nevermind.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And could I have the second resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the final plat of Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Subdivision, Corvail, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any discussion on this resolution? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for Traffic Safety Improvement Program Funding. And this agreement is for five hundred thousand dollars in traffic safety improvement program funding to be used to construct a single lane roundabout at the Heartland Drive and Commerce Drive intersection. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for the Traffic Safety Improvement Program Funding for the Heartland Drive and Commerce Drive Roundabout Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Questions or comments?
Any of this federal dollars at risk?
Well, it is, it is federal dollars. As far as we know, it's not at risk.
As far as we know.
At least today.
Any other questions?
Uh, any contingency plan, just in case?
No.
No.
Because residents probably will ask that, so I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay. That's a good question. Anything else?
Can't wait for it to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good project.
That is a lot of public comment about it in favor of having it completed.
Yeah. Yeah. Excellent. Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay. Next item is an option amendment to lease, and this is for Cookies and Dreams in the Iowa River Landing. And this option amendment would extend the lease term for five years, and this would end it on April thirtieth, twenty thirty-one. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an option amendment to Iowa River Landing Retail Lease with Cookies and Cream, Cookies and Cream, my ice cream, I'm sorry about that, Cookies and Dreams LLC, for nine oh one East Second Avenue Suite, one fifteen. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember when, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any comments on this item?
I read it Cookie and Cream too.
Okay. Yeah.
I read that the other day, so.
There you go. There you go. Okay. Good enough.
Best cookies in town.
You think? Yeah, they are very good, aren't they? They're wonderful.
Especially after a hockey game.
Yeah, absolutely. It's one of, my son loves stopping there. Whenever we go have a dinner in the River Landing, we always have to stop and get a cookie, for sure. Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have an amendment to a construction services agreement, and this amendment is for the extra costs for additional construction, observation, and administration for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Project. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an amendment to the construction services agreement with Bolton and Mank for the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Project. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by when? Questions or comments or any discussion?
Why, why was this needed, again? Did we talk about? Obviously, this went on longer than we anticipated.
Yeah, there was discussion about the length of time that we went through on the project, how it took longer, um, and then some of the items that, um, uh, they felt was not included originally that they ended up doing. But I do appreciate Kevin and Sherry's work on this. They had originally asked for over four hundred thousand on that, and both agree that this is a more appropriate amount.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a development agreement. And this development agreement will rebate the added property tax revenue from the renovation of the former Iowa River Power Restaurant for a period of ten years. And the public hearing for this will be on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting the public hearing of the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Old Gold and Black LLC for the historic renovation of the former Iowa River Power Restaurant. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions, comments, or any other discussion?
Yes. So this is TIF money, correct?
Yeah, technically it is, but this is, uh, different than most of our agreements. Um, this sets actually the base that the city will continue to collect.
Sure.
Versus what we would normally do, and they would get anything above our base amount that we would collect.
Right now, it's about eighty-six thousand dollars on the property as, which includes the building and the, and the parking area to the north.
Yeah. And that's the historic amount for that. Um, it hasn't been reevaluated since it's been emptied out, so, um, I think that's a fair amount for us, because it was as an occup, this, that still is an occupied building.
Sure. I, I guess we've, we're going to discuss later, of course, the impact of current legislation on TIF funding. Um, and I'm just, um, since we may or may not know what that will be in the future, these agreements that we have, both here and Southeast Development, you know, uh, are we, are we writing these contracts so there's flexibility and, and if law changes, that we can change our agreement or something?
Yeah, I think this particular agreement is to our benefit, because it gives us a minimum that we'll be able to collect off the property. Um, you know, I have advised anybody that has, um, uh, rebate agreements, where we rebate their taxes, that it may not be the same amount in the future. And so I have contacted, I believe, everybody that I'm aware of that we have an agreement with, just so that they can plan accordingly as well.
And maybe lobby accordingly.
Yeah, that's, that's up to them, but I think it's important that they know, because it could have an impact on their ability to repay, repay loans as well.
Of course. Okay. To be continued later.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have an SRF water revenue loan and distribution agreement, and this is for financing the well sixteen improvements through the state revolving fund. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing and approving a water loan, water revenue loan and disbursement agreement, and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of three million one hundred twenty thousand dollars Water Revenue Bond Series twenty twenty-five B. This resolution introduced for adoption by councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by when? Any questions or comments? Okey doke. Roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
But, ma'am, mayor, I would like to ask council to consider, to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to Y.
Moved by when? Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Okay. Next item, we have the city administrators' report.
Well, uh, mayor, I'll just start with the, um, Heartlanders are in the lead two to nothing after the first period, so that's a very good thing, um, that, um, in the playoffs, because that would tie up the playoffs if, um, they were able to win this evening. Coming up, we've got some great events. Um, Saturday, May third, um, will be, um, a great celebration playing in the park at Northridge Pavilion, Marthridge Park and Pavilion, and, um, there's going to be music and, um, food and coffee vendors, and, um, this is in conjunction with the library, the Parks Department, and the Iowa Children's Museum, um, Park and Recreation. So I just encourage people to come out. It's going to be a fun day from noon to three. Um, a celebration of the new, um, book walk is completed there, and I think, um, Allison, you're on your second book, I think? So that will change periodically, and, um, I've been able to read both of the first, um, books, and they're very interesting to, to follow along as you walk through that, um, that park. So encourage people to come out. Just remind people, we're coming up to that time where, um, if you can, if you have unused items around your home, this is a good time period, um, to let others make use of those. And so on May third, um, let's see, let me, no, it's May, May, May third is the garage sale, if you're so inclined, but then on May tenth is the recycle swap meet, which is another opportunity for you to bring items here to Corvail City Hall, and then take whatever, um, you can use for free, and then all the other art items will go to Salvation Army. So just encourage you to think about things around your house that others might be able to make use of, and, um, instead of throwing them in the trash, there's lots of other ways to make use of those items. So that's all I have, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor's report, really don't have a lot this evening, just wanted to note the Arbor Day proclamation. It is Earth Day today, and so really glad that we were able to celebrate, both commemorate that with the Arbor Day proclamation. And, uh, is Sherry, Sherry left?
No, she's.
Oh, is she still here? Sherry, is there a tree planting program?
Yeah.
That the, that people can take advantage of, if you want to? You were mentioning, asking about, it's in the connection, isn't it?
It's where you can buy tree through the city.
Yeah. Yeah.
We have a program called Branching Out that we run, um, in the spring, those, that closed.
Oh, it do.
And trees arrived today, and will, uh, they'll start picking them up on Thursday, residents will. Um, but we will run that again in, uh, next spring. We, they're a one and a half inch caliber tree, about eight to ten feet tall. They're really nice trees, uh, and, uh, we get them for about thirty to forty percent of a discount, um, by working with a, a broker that brokers trees from all over, kind of the Midwest area, Iowa, Illinois, Minnesota, um, and brings those, brings those in. So, um, it's a really good deal, what I'd encourage people to watch for that next year.
Yeah, next year. Yeah. We were actually looking at that, so, our, we have a tree that we lost in our yard, and we were looking to, we were going to replace it, so. Great. Good to know for next year. Okay. Thank you for that very much. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to note is, again, the, the proclamation that I did, uh, read this evening for Mental Health Awareness Month, just wanted to, you know, uh, mention that again, mention the NAMI Walk, and that's a really fun event in a beautiful setting that, I'll just remind people, that's at nine AM on Saturday, May tenth. And, uh, you know, this is a really important topic. I, I've always said, every time I've read this proclamation, I always share that I'm someone that struggles with mental health issues. I have, uh, anxiety and depression and ADHD, and take medication, I see a therapist, and I talk about that because I think it's really important to break the stigma around mental health issues. It's, it's been very hard lately, in fact, the, with everything that's going on, it's been really hard to, to keep, uh, you know, my mental health in a good place. I know that there are a lot of other people that I've talked to in the community that are feeling the same way. So make sure that you are doing things to take good care of your nervous system, to take good care of your mental health. There's a lot of resources out in the community that can help with that. The Community Crisis Services is, is a great place to start. Also, wanted to mention the nine eight eight suicide prevention hotline that you can call if you are struggling with mental health issues. And I think, uh, you know, in addition to getting treatment and, and, and doing practices to help keep yourself regulated, one of the things that I have found very helpful is being in community with folks, is, is meeting up with friends, getting connected with, with events and people in the community, and, and it really is a good antidote and, and a, and a good, another good strategy that, that can really help with those issues. So anytime you see a fun community event, we just talked about a, a couple that are, that are happening, you know, if you're feeling, if you're struggling, I would encourage folks are happening, you know, if you're feeling, if you're struggling, I would encourage folks to, to do those things as well, because connection is, is really, really important when you're, when you're having struggles with, with mental health. And that is all I have. City Attorney's Report?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Committee and Council Members' Report, we'll start down here with Royce.
I don't have a whole lot, other than, you know, I attended, I guess we'll call it a seminar through the University of Iowa Labor Center last weekend that deals with people that work in the heat, and with, you know, spring and summer coming up, you know, I just wanted to bring awareness to that, and it kind of falls into the Arbor Day as far as like having trees for shade, but just remember when, when you're in the heat and you're out there, you know, whether it be working, or riding bicycles, or exercising to make sure that you have water, that you take breaks, and you get plenty of shade. With the, with the rising temperatures globally, we have to be aware of that, it affects a lot more people now, the statistics show about 4% rise in, in heat strokes in the state of Iowa, so. And then I have a couple of questions, one, you know, I don't know if this is the right place for it, but I had some, some people ask me, is there anywhere in the city to get rid of used syringes, you know, contaminants, that, you know, anywhere, I know that, because they told me that you can't take them, there's, like Hy-Vee doesn't take them, or the pharmacies don't take them, so where would that be? Does anybody?
I do not know, they, several places have changed that, that don't take them anymore, but we can inquire and bring that up at the next meeting.
Might be something to think about, because I don't think, I think there's minimum places, minimum places now for people to take them. And then the second question is very important, and I asked anybody to tell me the answer, where do you find your Morrel mushrooms? I need to know this.
That's a secret nobody shares.
Okay, thank you, all right. Hi, what do you got for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, you know, say thank you to Mayor Foster for your courage and transparency, you know, regarding mental health and its surrounding issue. I know that that is something to not be and talk about a lot, and in order to, you know, remove the stigma that attaches to it, and, and make it like a normal illness, we have to be able to talk about it, because, you know, if you cut your hand, or if you get a cold, people know that you're sick, and they advise you to take care of yourself, to, you know, take a day off, do whatever you need, but yet when you suffer from mental health, it's unseen, and oftentimes it's undiagnosed, and it's also, you know, it make you feel like a failure, and so to have leader, and to have people who, you know, in a position of, of making change, acknowledge that this can affect anyone, it's very helpful, so thank you for that. Two, almost two weeks ago, tomorrow, there's an apartment in Corvale that caught fire, 22 family was displaced from that, and thanks to the, the Corvale Fire Department in conjunction with North Liberty, Tiffin, West Branch, Hill, Solon, and Oxford's, they were able to stop the fire from spreading farther, but the entire building is non-livable, and thanks to the effort of the staff at United Way and the Johnson County Management with the COAD, which is Community Organization Active in Disaster, and, and the ResCROSS, they were able to help those 22 family to not only secure a roof over their head, whether it's temporarily or permanent, and then also get them their most basic need, clothing, food, health and hygiene items, and last, I learned that there were, by this past weekend, there was three family that were still in the hotel, in the motel, but they are working really hard to get them permanent house placement, and that fell through because there was just some miscommunication that the house ended up to be in Iowa City, and the family did not, you know, approve of that, so. But I just wanted to point out that when we work together as a community, you know, we can, we can help people faster and, and in a timely manner, and prevent folks from falling through the crack, and so thank you to each of those agency, and to the, the staff of all the fire department, you know, for your work and for your diligence in getting people what they need. Let's see, it's spring, that mean things are growing, and things are growing, that mean garlic mustard is also growing, and I think in Corvale, and also in neighboring city, too, it's something that we battle every year, and it's a losing battle every year, I know that because I love to forage, and, you know, when I forage, I see garlic mustard, and if I see garlic mustard, I know that that field without care is, is going to be lost to garlic mustard, and so the city of Corvale actually have a dumpster to collect those plants, and we encourage folks to, you know, take a walk in the wood, learn what garlic mustard look like, and bring a trash bag, pull them up by the root, put them in a bag, and then take it to that dumpster. Do not put them in your yardways, or your compost, because they will just keep growing. Garlic mustard need to be here under a very, very hot temperature in order for it to not grow anymore, or you can eat them, they are edible, top to bottom, they taste pretty good, if you make pesto, you can use garlic mustard without having to spend your money on garlic, or you can make chip, just like kale chips, or you can make a saute green, whatever that may be. If you get garlic mustard a little bit bigger, you can use the root for, in substitute for horseradish, so there's plenty of use for them. If you would like to know what they look like, reach out to me, I would love to take you on a walk and pull garlic mustard, and they are pretty easy to pull now because of the rain, so go out there and pull some garlic mustard, and that dumpster is located just south of 10th Street and Hill Crest Drive, right next to the Corvale Community Garden. Let's see, we have a Johnson County Underestimated Small Business Grant that is closing April 30th, and so there is, you know, more than a week to apply. I would encourage any small business out there, especially owned by people of color or women, regardless of, of how you identify yourself as a woman, to, to take advantage of that, you can get from $3,500 to up to $20,000 just to start your business or to improve your business. Tomorrow, at the North Liberty Library, they have help with application, and they also provide childcare, if you need childcare in order to do that, and then there's a $25 stipend that you can get as well to attend that, so please take advantage of that. You can go on corvilledoc, no, corville.org, and find it under Small Business Grant. And then, let's see, we have this, and you can find this information at the rec center and also at the library. This is a skill trade career, a career fair, we know that a lot of junior and senior, they think about, you know, what's the next step after high school, and sometime college is not the next step, so what do they do? They still want to have like a good, secure job, so this would be, you know, the next step if college is not something that you want to, to do. This is everything that keep our cities running, it's water, it's sewer, it's, you know, construction, it's all of that, and so this is free and open to the general public, it's going to be at the Dream, Dream City from May 8th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Lunch will be provided as well, so if you have any young adult, or any junior and senior in your, you know, in your family, in your community that is looking for alternative from college, please help spread the words. There's a QR code that you can scan, and it will give you all the information, and I can leave this here at City Hall, and we can post that somewhere to, for folks to find. And one last thing, I just want to say thank you to all the city staff for all of your hard work, I know that things are not going to be easy the next couple of year, and we're going to have to get very creative. Just know that we are in this together, and just know that we have your back, and we, we see you, we see the work that you do every day, and I think right now, our job is to hopefully not reduce staff inside, that, at least that is my hope, so, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Rich?
Just a reminder, the DeGaulle Center, you know about this, Mike?
I do.
There's going to be a blood drive right here in City Hall on Thursday from 11 till 3:00. I love it, because it's, is this still kind of a competition between police and fire?
Not yet, I think it's fixed.
All right, okay, and council, all right. No, it's, it's a great, I encourage everybody who can, is able, to stick out their arm and donate a pint of blood, but it's a great thing. And I'm going to echo what I said, you know, there's a lot of numbers that go into a budget, and I'm a strong believer that no organization or, or company can exist without its people, and the people are the very foundation of, of any organization, any company, so I, I also want to, I've said it before, but I want to extend my gratitude to everybody, and to the department heads, please pass along to all your staff. I, I'm very grateful for everything that happens in this city and, and how it's run. Proud to be a taxpayer in Corvale. Thanks, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Heartlanders are still up two nothing. Great game last night, it, 7-6 disappointing loss, but very exciting game. They win tonight, which is a big if, given the score last night. Game five will be pivotal, that's Thursday, so I want to encourage people to, to get to that game. Missed our meeting two weeks ago, I was in Montreal for a professional meeting, and, and took a little time off and went to a Canadians game, and they've got nothing on the Heartlanders, come on. But it is, it is, it is very good fun, and it will be, hopefully it will be a very important game. Encourage people to, to get out there and go, it'd be great to get them back here for round two of the playoffs. The only other thing, the University Center for Human Rights is having a, kind of a fundraiser and event at, this Sunday, out at Walker Homestead, 11:30 to 2:00, and good time, I think, to support human rights, and this is celebrating, I think, I think I said 25 years for the organization with the university, so if you're of that mind, it's, it might be a good thing to support. That's all I have.
Great, thank you so much.
Mayor, can I add one thing?
Yes, yes, yes.
It's very fitting that you read the proclamation for Arbor Day today, because on Thursday, the 25th, city staff will be planting 150 trees all over the city, and so if you notice there's tiny little hole with the, you know, orange lie around, that is the hole that the tree will go into. It's supposed to happen today, but with the rain, it was too wet, so you'll get to see city staff out there on Thursday, planting tree.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Moved by Huen, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you.